We are live. Welcome, everybody. My name is Debbie Winnick. I am a member of the League of Women Voters of the Cape Cod area. And I will be your moderator tonight. I am from the town of Orleans. And we do that on purpose so that we always bring in an outside moderator to make sure that there's no question of bias or impropriety or anything when we do a candidate's forum. I hope you realize that the League of Women Voters is completely nonpartisan when it comes to candidates. We do, however, advocate for issues that we have studied. And we hope that you will be interested in joining the League. It's very active here on the Cape. We have quite a lot of geography to cover, and there are so many issues. So we invite you to join the League of Women Voters of the Cape Cod area. And men, women, we've got lots of young people who are becoming active in issues and living on the Cape and politics, and we welcome all of you. Tonight, we are here for the candidate's forum for the town of Yarmouth for the Select Board. This forum is part of the League's ongoing voter education efforts to help voters make informed decisions at the upcoming Yarmouth Spring Town Elections. So let me start by introducing you to our candidates for the town of Yarmouth for the Office of Select Board. We have five candidates tonight, which is really exciting to see so many candidates. They are Joyce Ann Flynn, Keith B. Keston, Thomas E. Nicconello Sr., Tracy Ann Post, and Jenny M. Wheeler. I'll start this evening by explaining some procedures for the forum, which each candidate received ahead of time. Candidates will have two minutes to answer each question and two minutes for a closing statement. All of our questions will be presented to all of the candidates. Closing statements will be done in the order in which they pulled their names, or numbers, actually, out of a hat. Questions will be asked in a random rotating order with five candidates. It's always fun to make sure that we stay random and that we do our best not to miss anybody. I have asked the candidates to keep me honest if they feel that they've been missed. That just means that I'm not reading my chart properly, and we will fix that problem. We have timekeepers sitting in the front row. When there's half a minute left on the speaking time for each candidate, our timekeeper will hold up a card that says 30 seconds, as she has done right now. That indicates that our candidates should finish up their thoughts. They should wrap up by finishing their final sentence when they see the stop card. If somebody continues after the stop card, I will ask them to stop speaking, and we will move on to the next candidate. Personal references about other candidates are out of order. Please stick to the issues, and please make sure that your questions are issue-oriented. The forum is being recorded by Cape Media and will be available on Channel 26 on Comcast or on the Cape Media website, capemedia.org. Cape Media will provide the town of Yarmouth with a recording that they can schedule or that they will schedule on Channel 8. And now, may I ask you in the audience, please turn off your cellphones and anything else that might beep during our forum. Your watches, your iPads, I can't even begin to come up with the whole list anymore, right? It used to be just phones. We request that you treat all of our candidates fairly. Please remain quiet throughout the forum. No clapping or cheering or calling out, with the exception that after all of their closing statements, we do encourage you to show your appreciation for their candidacy and for their answers to all the questions tonight. There is a leak policy. No campaign literature or signs or buttons are allowed inside the room. You are encouraged to submit questions for the candidates on the provided index cards. And we do have League members in the room who have index cards. And if you'd like an index card, there's somebody in that corner. We have somebody in that corner. And just raise your hand. And then, when you're ready, they can be collected. We have a League member who is screening those questions. And the screening policy is basically that the question is appropriate for the race that our candidates are running for. The question is legible, so we can read it. And if we have several questions on the same issue, those questions may be put together so that we can ask one larger question. And that's what our screening committee does. We have a committee of one tonight. We will read as many questions as time allows. And we also do hope that after the forum, if you have a chance to speak to the candidates and they are able to stay, we encourage you to do that. So let's get started. We are going to start with question number one in alphabetical order. First, this question goes to Joyce Ann Flynn first. And the question is, why did you decide to run for the Yarmouth Select Board?
I decided to run for the Yarmouth Select Board because I was really pleased with the progress that we were starting to make on long-term problems. If you came by way of Route 28, the sewer is the most obvious start. But it seemed like suddenly people were willing to think longer term. We're in a crisis right now. My favorite place on Cape Cod is Long Pond in South Yarmouth, Wings Neck Beach. And I somewhat complacently, over the years, noticed different long ponds getting closed briefly, Centerville, Marston's Mills, something else between Brewster and Harwich. And a year ago, my long pond got closed because of contamination. We really need to tackle the things that affect our quality of life here. It's always going to be a balance. That's why my campaign logo is a bridge. We're always going to have to try to balance different things to come out with the right mix. But I'm concerned about our human community as much as our natural environment. And that's where we'll have to kind of wade back and forth. The natural environment needs a lot of help. Some of my best friends are turtles, and they were actually greatly distressed about the clear cutting on Route 6 recently, Route 6A recently. Turtles have their own little shells, but we don't. And we have to work out housing within the limits of cherishing the natural environment. I think that we can all do that because if we come together, we can do hard things. If we don't come together, we can't.
Thank you. And Keith, the same question, please. What was your motivation and why are you running for Select Board?
Well, I'm running because after being a resident here for...
Keith, you might want to hold that up a little bit.
After being a resident here for over 65 years, the town that I grew up in and love is not the same. There's many issues that need to be addressed. Joyce mentioned some of them. I'm sure all of you have complaints or issues that you would like to raise. I am just not happy with the way things are going in this town. All too often, I ask myself, why is this being done this way? Why is money being spent that way or not being spent? Why do we have a housing issue? Why can't we take care of the environment? These are things that I would like to address and, in some cases, hopefully correct, make better for the town and the taxpayers in the town. I work at the disposal area, and I speak to easily 50 to 75 people a day. And I believe the moderator at the last town meeting said, people are happy to come here. Well, if you actually speak to people, they're not so happy about being here. I know most of us have our own homes, came here for a reason. If you can honestly say to yourself, this is a great place, I like the way things are going, fine. However, I think most of you will agree that things need to be improved, and hopefully by being on the board, I can help improve them.
Thank you. And Tom, same question, please.
Yes, thank you, and good evening, everybody. Why do I want to be a selectman? Well, I've been here just about all my life, too. I was brought into a lovely family and got my education I wanted, my career. Retired a little while ago and then opened up a restaurant with my children. Semi-retired, and, you know, I was taught to give back to your community. So over the last 10 years, when I was semi-retired, working with my children, well, they're adults, 40 and 36, but we had a great time, what we were doing. And I was part of the county government. I was on the Board of Appeals for a little while. I was on the personnel board, which is kind of complicated, but I find that it was very challenging, and I learned a lot about what happens, you know, when you have those types of situations and relationships with people. And I feel that I can contribute to the future. And if I can bring some young people into the mix and be an inspiration for them, to get them involved with our government and our town, our town's really precious to me. I'm a big history guy, and this town has a lot of history, and I truly love it. So I want to be a selectman to help the community. I want to share my experiences and my talents that I've had journey along the way. And I want to make sure that we continue in the future on somewhat of an affordable, reasonable, and common sense, common vision, common goal. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And Tracy.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for being here and for watching at home, and to all the candidates in the League for hosting this. It's extremely important that we know who we vote for. I don't think it's a secret to anybody that I absolutely love this town. I've lived here most all of my life. Much like what the other candidates have already spoken, I enjoy the service. I enjoy the challenge. It was a great honor of mine to serve previously four terms and have been elected four times, served 12 years on the board already, previous to that, the planning board, Community and Economic Development Committee, Affordable Housing Trust, I could go on. I very much enjoyed that service. And I miss it. And I sit back and I watch, and we've done a lot of really great work. But there's a lot more work to do. And it takes somebody that has the knowledge and the strength to be able to work through some of these very difficult issues and give it the time that it deserves. These are very complex issues that we deal with. You need to listen and learn and just take all of it into account and do what's best for the majority. And that's something I'm proud that I've always done, and I hope to continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jenny, the same question, please.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here this evening. I am very grateful for the opportunity to be in front of all of you. Why I have chosen to run for the Select Board is because Cape Cod rebuilt me. I am a Washashore. I'm the newest one to this table and to this, that appears, to this town. I took over the old Riverway Lobster House a little over three years ago, a very historic building here in town. I am the co-founder and executive director of the Family Table Collaborative. And part of why I'm choosing to run is because of how I've built the collaborative. I like to say it's by the community for the community. I have over 600 volunteers that help us do what we do. We feed people from Bourne and Falmouth, currently through Eastham, in the next four to five weeks, all the way through P-Town. We've put over 165,000 meals into the community. But we do it because the community comes together to make it happen. I believe the skills I have that many of you might not know about could come to be very helpful in what Yarmouth is currently facing. I have an MBA from Babson with a focus in social entrepreneurship. What does that mean? It means you use business modeling to help solve social, societal bills. And right now, Yarmouth's facing a lot of issues, a lot of complex issues. We are stronger together. We need more people at the table. We need more voices. And I am here to serve the community that I have come to love. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And on to the next question. Keith, you'll be responding to this one first, and then, again, as I mentioned, we're going to be in random order. What I want to make sure everybody realizes is that there are two seats open so that when you do go to the polls, you'll have the opportunity to select two of your candidates for Select Board. Okay, Keith, same question to everybody, but Keith goes first. Here it is. What do you think are the top two issues facing Yarmouth?
Top two issues, affordable housing would be number one. And with the average price now of a house on Cape Cod being $500,000, the issue is going to be coming larger. People in Massachusetts now need to have a median income of $295,000 to maintain what's called a comfortable life. This is mom and pop and two kids. I don't see that happening on Cape Cod. I don't know many people. I don't travel in the circle where the average income is $295,000. So what are we going to do about affordable housing? Are we going to keep building more? Do we have to raise the threshold for what it takes to apply for affordable housing? And, you know, how much can we take? The other big issue is obviously the sewer system. Coming into the summer season, nobody wants to see the roads ripped up. Unfortunately, it's something that needs to be done. Unfortunately, we have to live through it. And fortunately, it will be better for the town in the long run.
Thank you. Jenny, you're next for this question, please. Top two issues.
I'm going to agree with Keith. I believe the top two issues are housing and wastewater. I think that, I am not positive, but I believe that I am the only person sitting at the table that doesn't own a home on Cape Cod. I don't own my home. I rent. And the reason I've been in Yarmouth for the past year and a half is because it took me five years to find year-round housing. So that was a really big deal. I live this every day. I'm super grateful to have the house I have, and I'm super grateful for it to be in Yarmouth. But it took me five years. I served on the Board of Trustees of a condo association where we had our own wastewater treatment plant. I learned more about wastewater in the years I served than I ever wanted to know. However, it might come in handy again. These are real issues, and unfortunately, these issues have been pushed down the pike for years. They have been passed year after year, on and on. And I believe we need some creative solutions. We need some entrepreneurial thought and process, and we need people who work and collaborate together, who listen and who will work together. We are stronger together, but these issues are not, they're not small. And they really require people to step up to the table and, you know, make some difficult decisions.
Thank you. Tracy, the same question, please. Top two issues.
Well, I think we're probably all in agreement. Wastewater and housing are definitely significant issues that need to be addressed. My husband and I bought our house in 2001. We were fortunate to be able to do that. I don't think in today's market, even with him being retired from the military and both of us having good jobs, that we'd be able to do it. I now have a 25-year-old that was raised here, grew up here, works here, and can't afford to live here. And I'm grateful he's still here. But we are losing some of the best resources that we have, which is our young people, to over the bridge. You'll see it even in municipal jobs. We cannot fill jobs because they can't afford to live here. So we have to be strategic and thoughtful on how we can do that. There are some good ideas, but we have to do that. The other thing we have to do is continue to work on wastewater because water quality, clean water, our environment is extremely important. And yes, it did get pushed down the road for a while because we can't do it on the backs of the taxpayers. If we think housing is affordable now, put all of the wastewater on your taxes and see what happens. I was in the grocery store when I was serving, trying to make a difficult decision about wastewater originally, and there were a lot of older people that were coming up to me and saying, that's the difference between them staying in their house or not. And while it took us a little bit longer, we forced our administration to think smarter. We were able to complete the first phase without it being on the taxes. I'm proud of that. But we have more phases that are coming, and it's going to be expensive. And we need to make sure that, like Jenny said, we need to be creative. We can't just tax people.
Thank you. And Tom, the same question, please.
Yes, I'm just resetting my timer. So I'd like to do my own. Thank you, yes. My top two issues are, as Tracy said, and Keith and Jenny, is, well, I like to put wastewater under water because that's the driving force. And then housing, too. Water, to me, is quite important. We are now entering a phase, which were way too late, on the collection system, which is extremely important for our environment. We have the Title V system, which was approved by the federal government, but it didn't really go far into it as what it needed. It allowed the chemical nitrogen to leach out into our ground. We live on a sandbar. A sandbar is different if you live over the bridge in a mountain area. You have different soil makeups. The nitrogen penetrates our sand and goes right into our groundwater. It's extremely dangerous. Right now, this town is the only town in our Commonwealth out of the 350 towns, 351 towns, excuse me, that generate reclaimed water. But we need to maximize that 110%. We're going to be going and collecting everyone's waste, and we're going to be cleaning the wastewater with water generating more water. Where do we put this water? We need to give it back to everybody so they can use it for any purpose they want except for consuming. 75% of the earth is water. Out of the 75%, 3% is clean water, and out of that 3%, only 1% is for human consumption. We have to be smart, as these people said, and think out of the box on how to use the water. Housing, it's a big issue. It's been a big issue, and we have to correct it. We have to make sure we have affordable housing and jobs for these people to stay here, live, make money, and afford it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joyce, you're going to close out this question for us, please. Don't forget the microphone.
As you can see, housing and the sewers are very high on everyone's list. I consider them part of the same issue because, in fact, the sewers or the lack thereof have held up a lot of changes that we need to make in planning and zoning. We're never going to be able to have housing that's affordable for people again if we don't change the way we use the land. I'm in favor of duplexes. I'm in favor of mixed-use housing. Say 128 for new housing would be, you know, restoring on top of quite little stores or really practical little stores. But I can see the point of that, and that would give a much better presence on 28 than we have now. The lack of searing has held us up in a lot of ways. I think it's also been a factor in what I would consider the big number two, economic development. I approach the housing from getting people an opportunity for better jobs here on the Cape so they could afford better housing. But that said, circling back to the housing, we have a housing issue that comes from two different ways. One is the general inflation in the country, and the other is something unique to desirable areas like our own, which is that we have people coming in with cash... areas like our own, which is that we have people coming in with cash offers who are buying up houses and plan to use them as short-term rentals. And we need a lot of work on that. People who are moving here, I know we've got a lot of them, but they're also a resource to help solve problems. I don't see that any would coming to rent a house in a B&amp;B fashion for two weeks is going to be any part of our solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, you're up first on this next question. To all of you, if elected, what do you think should happen to the school building, which the town has now taken over?
Thank you very much. The Mattakee School Building, it went through quite a history. It was built back in the day. It served many of the people, the residents, you. And now it's going to be left out, and we have a new intermediate school, which is absolutely beautiful for our children to go and get an education. So there's 70 acres over there, and the 70 acres are near the well field, so it's limited to what can happen. The recreation department right now, if anyone saw the Select meeting last night, the recreation department is using the gym 200%. We've had a problem with our recreation department over the years where they couldn't go and have programs for our children because of the schools using their criteria for their. So it was always, it was always a conflict. But now this building has provided an opportunity for these young kids to actually find their way, right? If you give these children an opportunity, they'll probably go on the right path, and that's what we want. We want our kids to grow up with a good sense of values, a good sense of morals and standards, and love their community. So I believe that the future for that piece is going to be somewhere along that line. I'm not too sure what's going to happen. We have ME Small Building over there, which I believe should stay there because if you put another 900 cars on Station Avenue, I don't think anyone would like to do that. So I think the West Yarmouth people should, you know, continue going there. They're all familiar with that facility, and I think there's a lot of opportunity for us as a community to come together and find out what we can do with that. And I feel recreations are extremely important. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Same question to Tracy, please.
Thank you. So I was on the board when we redeveloped both Lawrence MacArthur and John Simkins. And, you know, in retrospect, I think it's, it was a missed opportunity to not look at those properties together. We did that in piecemeal. Having ME Small on Mattakee's, knowing that ME Small needs millions of dollars of work. It's in bad shape. They were putting buckets there. There's mold. It's not a good situation. And even Carol Woodbury said after we got the intermediate school built that she should have went with ME Small first because it was in worse shape. So I know when Station Ave. was built, they built that for the ability to put a wing on. And anytime you can consolidate, it's better. I agree with Tom that Station Ave. will have to be looked at, but I think it'll be a real missed opportunity for our community if we don't look at that parcel holistically. I don't know if the answer is housing. I think it could be a combination of things, maybe tech. I think one of the, one of the ways that was mentioned to solve affordable housing is to bring higher-quality jobs, right? So if you have maybe a tech campus, you know, it would, it would help. But the bottom line is, is it's not our building. It's the building of the residents, and it takes consideration and takes time. And I think that we should vet it and listen to the experts and find out what the best ultimate use is. But I'd like to see maybe a combination of things, but I would certainly like to see a committee look at it and utilize the entire space together.
Thank you. Jenny, same question, please.
I would agree that, sitting up here, I don't know what the exact right answer is. And I, like Tracy said, I think that there needs to be a community, you know, community involvement. What I can tell you is I definitely think it needs to be some level of mixed use. You know, there's a lot about school buildings, old and new, that waste a lot of space and time and money because they're not allowed to be used for a lot of mixed use. And I think that's a missed opportunity. I can tell you from the food security space, which is a major issue facing Cape Cod that I know inside and out, you know, you can't access most school buildings. You can't access their kitchens. You can't access, and it's because of contracts. So there's a lot of opportunity. Clearly, housing has to be looked at, but agreed that the reality is, is that it's not just, you know, we talk about affordable housing, and I think that's a trigger for a lot of people. We need, like, we need workforce housing. We need affordable housing. We need jobs that pay people that can actually work and live here. And the youth is definitely, we're losing youth left and right. So whether it is a kitchen, whether it is housing, whether it has job programs and job training, whether it has small shops and creates new jobs, or whether it's tech, I believe it has to be some level of mixed-use building.
Thank you. And Joyce, the same question, please. Can you take the microphone, please?
I think you're getting started, teacher. It means microphone unconsciously.
Right. It's especially important because it's being video. It's being taped.
Well, Mattakee's seems to be in much better shape than its neighbor ME Small, which is the only place where I've ever been rained on in indoor lobby. I've vetted all the schools, and Mattakee's has more promise than you would think for an older school. It doesn't have the kind of electrical connections that would support computers all over for the style of learning that we currently have, but it does have solar panels, and those were put up by the Cape Light Compact decades ago. I'm the town rep to the Cape Light Compact Board, and I've been there for 14 years now. It also had wiring to support that, and that's, that's a lot of circuit boxes. So there are some good things about Mattakee's. It's oddly designed for many uses because it's designed in group rooms, as you would expect in a school. So I guess I think, I'm glad that they're taking a year to really study this rather than making a decision last March. And I guess I would need to see the possible uses that are proposed. I'd hate to have it go into private domain even for privately-owned housing because it is a community resource and it is something that's jointly held right now. The other thing I'd say about Mattakee's is it's a central location that makes it very valuable. I'm aware, for example, of the library across the street, and our libraries are interested, but you'd have to change some Cape Cod regional transit routes to make sure that people could get to that by bus if it were going to be the libraries. Library's currently reachable along 28. Thanks.
Thank you very much. And Keith, to finish up this question, please.
I would love to see that become an arts and cultural center as well as a sports, a sports venue. We have such a diverse population here now. It would be great if we could have programs there so one facet of the town's people can meet, engage, and enjoy other facets of the town. All too often, I see people turning the other way, not trying to engage people who may not have been brought up here. I think a cultural center would be fantastic. Arts, performing arts. Let's give the younger generations someplace to go, someplace to grow. Sports, let's, let's centralize some of the recreational areas we have. It can be better controlled in that particular area. There's plenty of space. However, I think it may come down to the housing issue. As much as I would like to see the cultural center, I think we're going to need it for housing.
Thank you. Okay, we're going on to our next question, and Jenny, this one comes to you first. It's actually two questions that I'm going to bring together because the topic is the What is your opinion on the issue of migrants in town? And specifically, what is your opinion on the issues of some of the local motels having been used for sheltering families?
So my opinion is that, you know, well, first of all, let's start with how that system has worked. The towns weren't actually given any notice. It was a bid contract that went out from the state to local hotels and motels around the state, and it required private entities hosting through state contracts. So the towns have had no say, none whatsoever. So the migrants that were here came to Yarmouth with no notice to Yarmouth and no say from Yarmouth. As far as my belief system, I believe it's a really, really tough topic in the United States, not just in Massachusetts and not just in Yarmouth. I believe that we need to protect our resources, but I also believe that if, you know, people need assistance, then particularly in the short term, I, I'm not opposed to giving assistance, but I do believe it can't take away from the town's resources. And so that's where, you know, it's, it's not an easy decision, and it's not an easy topic, but it's one that I can assure you, we haven't had inability to make. And that's where you've seen migrants come into Massachusetts in, I believe it's seven towns. And there is no easy decision here. There isn't. I don't believe it should take away from town resources, and I believe that we need to work with the state if those contracts, if private contracts are given to local entities. I believe we need to work with the state to ensure that the town doesn't lose resources because of it.
Thank you. And Tom, the same question, please. I think they're tangled.
No problem. We can work it.
Okay.
Thank you so much. So, yeah, well, we have a town government that's quite like a business, and it's a big-dollar business, and we have to work with our state. And our state sometimes gives us the business. And, you know, I love my country. I love my state. However, when you have businesses that should work together, they should work together. Now, we have a school system that's part of the state, and yet every year, we're fighting to get their end of their commitment, right? So it's like learning how to swim with the sharks, right? And we, we do that very well. We have to work with the state on wastewater. We have to work with the state on climate. We have to work with the state on all kinds of issues. And then when we ask stuff from the state, they don't treat us too nice. And I don't think that's fair, right? We have to, what did we give them last year? $45.3 million in taxes went to Beacon Hill from our region. I mean, I think we deserve a little better, right? The business people, they were solicited to an opportunity. Some of them took advantage. Some of them saw that they didn't want that. Now, as a businessman, you have to justify the consequences and everything that goes with it. That's up to every individual to make that decision. I don't really agree on what particularly happened. I, I believe that the state, to this day, you know, still didn't pay the spare share of the school bill. So I believe, you know, we have to work with our governor and everyone up there, but, you know, they have to work with us, too, and to be fair, if we ask a question, it shouldn't be a month for an answer. So I, I think there's some work to be done there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Joyce, the same question, please.
About the migrant issue, I think there are a number of things about that that we should keep in mind. The people who were housed here on no notice were actual applicants for asylum who had refugee status applied for because they were from Haiti, which is one of the countries that's currently listed as a country from which asylum applicants can be expedited. I thought it was an odd thing to have a no-bid contract that went on between the hotel and the state with no notice at all to the town. And I am about government transparency, so that bothered me. I'm also about courtesy, and it seems to me that it would have been good to give the Select Board a heads-up that the town had increased by 70 people. But that said, the, the whole question of private property and how much you have the right to do with it, what you will, I guess, comes up in the ownership of the hotel. We might think that Harborside Suites shouldn't have done that, but on the other hand, these people needed a place to stay, and they're humans, and they had very young children who were never going to get that stage in their developmental situation again. It seemed to me a matter of pride that so many people in Yarmouth stepped up to help these people. National and international policies brought them here. Their arrival or the time of it was a surprise from the state, but still, I'm really glad that we helped them while they were here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Keith, please, the same question.
The word that comes to mind is unfair. It was very unfair of the state to, I will say, abuse the town. We all know we had no notice. Some may even say that the moves were clandestine. We never got straight answers from a lot of people who knew things and just were not willing to tell us. It's unfair to the, it was unfair to the taxpayers in this town. I think some of us felt we were being taken advantage of. And, and please keep in mind that I have, I do not want to cast any dispersion on, on the people that were brought here. It was unfair to them as well, knowing that they were going to be moved more than once, putting, putting their children in schools, taking them out of schools. Not fair to anybody. And Jenny brought up the, the use of, of resources. We have limited resources, as you all know, and, and to dole them out unbenounced to us to, to people who, who are not native to this area, again, very unfair. My, my heart goes out to those people, but also I'm very sympathetic to, to the towns' people and the taxpayers. We should not have been treated like that, and we should have been given some answers.
Thank you. Tracy still needs to answer this question, and then...
And then a collection.
Sure. Tracy.
Well, I'm not sure what I can add that hasn't already been said. I think communication. We should demand our state communicate better. However, the migrant issue and the hotel issue were really not, that's not the position that the board took. The, the board has and has always taken the position that no happy family lives in a hotel. We worked very hard to get rid of the Cavalier and to make that good-quality year-round housing. What was happening in some of our hotels for many, many years were they were long-term renting. You know, no, no fire alarms, no cooking facilities. School buses were stopping outside of hotels. It was very unfortunate. The town had turned its back on what was going on for many, many years. So several years ago, we created the motel bylaw, and we enforced it. And at that point in time, we were criticized then. But we helped people that were, that were wanting to be and participate in our community. We gave them first-class and security. We put them into quality year-round housing. We got them out of living in hotels. So it was strictly enforcing the bylaw. The bylaw says you cannot have a long-term stay there, and that's what it was about. It wasn't really about the migrants. I agree with what's been said here... I agree with what's been said here, though. It's a federal issue, but communication with the state failed, as it often does, and there were a lot of resources that were used. But I feel bad for the families. I feel bad for the children who started school and had to leave again. So, there's a lot of work to do, and when you talk about it and you have an open conversation, you can solve some of these issues, but that wasn't happening. It was a one-way conversation, and that's not good for anybody.
Thank you. Do you have a request to correct information?
I do.
Okay. You can have 30 seconds.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, because it has been said that it was unfair to Yarmouth taxpayers, local taxpayers, the migrants' finances, whether for lodging, whether for meals, or for their participation in the schools, were paid for by state and federal emergency funds. So, that wasn't from our local tax base.
Thank you. Okay, and we're going to move on to the next question. Tracy, you're on this one first, please. Next question. What is your position on the Proposition 2.5 override to fund the school budget?
Well, thank you for the question. That's always a tough one. Unfortunately, it's one of those annual things. You know, as you know, I've been around a long time, and we have seen some tumultuous times with our schools and trying to hold the line. It's a tough one because we mandate that our town departments live within 2.5, okay? Our police, our fire, that do unbelievable work, and every other town department does not have an option. They live within Proposition 2.5. So, what does it say to them when you support the inflated, not inflated budget, but the ever-growing budget of the schools? Now, the school's challenges are, there's a lot of them. So, this particular year, I know that the board supported it. I think what happened was we got a lot of COVID funds, and a lot of people were hired, they grew the budget by that, and now those funds are no longer there, okay? So, and what had been happening previously is our population was declining and the budget was going up. You know, it's a little bit tricky because they talk about cuts, but they're getting $2 million more next year than they got from Yarmouth this year. So, it's not really cuts, it's decreases to the increases. However, I support it this year because we have a new superintendent, and we have, I know the board has worked with them to provide a step down in future years, which I think is extremely important. So, we need to right the ship, and we need to hold the line, and that's my position on that.
Thank you. And Joyce, what's your position on the Prop 2.5 override for the schools?
Thank you. Well, let's first tackle one this year.
Joyce, let's use your, it's okay. It's okay.
Can you vote for someone who's not trainable? Probably not.
That's all right. We're just going to get Keith to use his elbow.
Well, this year's override was for $880,000, and I see that as a sort of transition year because what happened in the pandemic years, when there was lots of federal aid coming into the schools, that was used and sort of became part of the school's use. We'll be transitioning out of that in two years, and we've moved up to the level that includes that special aid right now. I think as long as the schools can show that they can make a really good use of it for the pupils, we should keep in mind about the school population, that with the new school, our gorgeous school that we have our town meetings in now, the, Yarmouth is retaining people in the district. The Dennis Yarmouth District before that, a lot of years, was losing student population, and according to complicated formulas, that would mean that part of the per pupil cost that would have come to Yarmouth would be sent to NOSID or to wherever. These students became migrants too. But we're not losing them anymore, and I think that that's important. There's also, in addition to the transitional budget this year, I think there's a concern that I think we all should keep in mind. The kids who were in school during the pandemic years are not in great shape, and I think we should err on the side of generosity where they're concerned. Kids are depressed, they're way behind in social skills, and I think we can, through the schools, try to do well by them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Tom, you're next on the question of the school override, please.
Thank you very much. What is my opinion on the 2.5 override for the school? Well, I have to say I'm going to support the override because the children need to be educated. What we lost control of is the expense of educating children. We have school choice. Right now, any children, any child can go anywhere, we have to provide the transportation. We just had a carrier that pulled out of the contract because they can't maintain it, so now the school has to take somebody from over the big bridges, come here, pick up our child, and bring them back over the bridges, and then bring them back again. So, it's extremely costly. We do that for the benefit of the children to get a good quality education. I am extremely impressed that the two towns come together, the town administrators, the superintendent, and they worked out this wonderful plan so we didn't have a $2.5 million override, right? We have an $880,000 override, which only is $10 for $100,000 on a tax base. So, I believe that's affordable for everyone. Again, the bottom line is the children. We need to have children to sit here in the future and make intelligent decisions about our community, and we can't do that if we shortchange them. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jenny, the question of the override, please.
Making sure it's not strangling Tracy. I stand for the override, and like everyone else has spoken to, I don't think anyone likes to vote for an override. And, you know, the reality is, there is an issue with a lot of children coming out of COVID. I was very impressed by the new superintendent. I was very impressed with the transparency of how the two towns have worked together to get to where they are now. But there's also one more issue. There is specific programs on the chopping block if it doesn't pass, and that the band and arts are two of them. And I stand incredibly firmly, as a past national level athlete, I believe that you need recreation, I believe you need the arts, I believe you need music, I believe you need these programs to raise well-educated, well-rounded, successful children that then become successful adults. And so, I stand for the override in this instance, though I, like everyone else, will keep a very tight eye on it because fiscal responsibility is something I stand very firmly on.
Thank you. Keith?
Seems that the override has become a necessary evil, and unfortunately, it comes up year after year, and as Tom pointed out, the main focus should be on educating the younger people in the community. The younger people are our future. To see programs cut, to see teachers dismissed because there is no program for them to teach just takes away from our future. The two towns have done their best to come together, to make the best of the situation. I unfortunately am not familiar with all the figures that some of my, some of the other people on the panel may be familiar with, but I do know, once again, that the children, the education of our younger folks need to be the priority, and if supporting Prop 2.5 accomplishes that, then I am certainly for it.
Thank you. The next question takes us back to housing. The Yarmouth Housing Authority plans on developing 19 acres off Forest Road. On three separate town meetings, this has been opposed by the residents of Yarmouth. This location feeds four town wells, which are the worst-performing wells on Cape Cod. What is your position? Joyce?
What I'd like to see to tackle this is to get that area that's so affected by flooding in Captain's Village, because it's part of Captain's Village, not the whole Captain's Village, addressed in the Low Line Roads Initiative. That's one that's coming up. The Cape Cod Commission has talked about it, and it's one of the things that's being looked at through the climate czar that we have at the state level. And I think that that mitigation should happen before we do any more digging there. I'm all in support of more housing. That's a nice location, it's near a recreation area, it's near the dump, which is an essential thing for all of us, but I think we've got to do something about the flooding first. That said, it's hard to say that to someone who's waiting for housing, but the bureaucratic difficulty is, the Board of Selectmen has no authority over the Yarmouth Housing Authority, and town meeting really can't stop the Yarmouth Housing Authority either because they are a separate municipal operation.
Thank you. Tom, same question, please.
Thank you very much. My thoughts on the Yarmouth Housing Authority. Well, they, they've done a great job. They have some good facilities along Forest Road. The area that we're in discussion tonight, I believe, should not be built until that neighborhood is hooked up to the collection system. An average person uses 20,000 gallons of water per year. We have a low-lying neighborhood, we have septic systems that leach out to the ground. Is this causing flooding? Of course not. Will the water be somewhat decimated by collecting the waste from us and bringing it back to the plant? It sure would. There'll be no more dispensing of leach field water into the area. So, to me, the question should be, can we get the collection system to work in that neighborhood as soon as we can? We have the Route 28 corridor, which needs to be done because we've all made an agreement from the passports that the business community would fund the wastewater system. Well, our business community is very low, and we need to increase that in order for this to happen. If we don't increase the business community, then you all know the answer. But we have to get the water out of that neighborhood, and having leach fields with a septic tank is only making it worse. So, that's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Keith, same question, please.
Both Tom and Joyce have hit on the key problem in that area, and that is getting rid of the problem that is there now. The flooding, the flooding situation is not acceptable, and I would not support any type of building in that area until that is taken care of, and that's pretty much it.
Thank you. Jenny?
I am not as familiar with this area as some of my counterparts here. Obviously, flooding and housing don't go together. So, the reality is, we all know we need housing, and anywhere that it can be done responsibly, I would advocate for it, recognizing exactly what other people have said, which is, we do not have control over the Yarmouth Housing Authority. But you need to make sure that when we put housing in, that it isn't going to damage the land or the community around it. But the need for housing is significant, and we have to evaluate and look at every parcel that comes up that is a reasonable option, and at least do the environmental study, take a look at it, see what it can do. And as Tom said, we need, we need a business base, and we need to make sure our business base is supported, and we can't support it if people aren't here, and we can't support it if people can't live here. So, we need to find that balance and figure it out, and we need to do it quicker rather than longer.
Thank you. And Tracy, to finish up this question, please.
Yes, thank you very much. So, this has been in the hands of the authority for many years. Many years ago, when I was on the board, we tried to, you know, get them to transfer that to perhaps one of the underperforming hotels to create housing there instead of, you know, I'm more in favor personally of redeveloping underutilized properties than clearing new land, and so, we listened to the people of the town. The people of the town, as was stated, they had voted against it, and not only that, they also voted against any mediation from the taxpayers of the water issue in the Captain's Village. So, there's a lot of pieces to this, obviously with all these, the pieces, the devils in the details, you know, but they would probably have to put a treatment facility in there, and I think we just need to watch the regulatory process happen. As has already been stated, it's not in the Board of Selectmen's purview, but we do take direction from the citizens, and if the citizens are saying that this is what they, you know, not what they want, then we should have discussions about maybe alternatives.
Thank you. The next question to Keith, you're first on this one. What's your position on the expansion of the runway at Barnstable Airport? And it looks like it's Runway 15/33. It's hard to read this, so I'm not sure if that's correct, but the question is, and its impact on Yarmouth?
I am all for the expansion of that runway. As has been mentioned before in answering several other questions, we need to make Yarmouth more attractive to businesses. We need businesses to support the town, we need the town to support the businesses. In order to get people here, we need to expand that runway. And I am not sure if Yarmouth has a representative on the, do you have a representative? Okay. I am not sure what their position is on it. I'm guessing they're in support of it as well. The infrastructure in the mid-Cape area needs to be beefed up. I think it would be a great asset to the town, providing more access to the area. I see no real downside. Planes fly over my house all the time. What's one or two more?
Thank you. And Jenny, what's your position on the expansion of the runway and its impact on Yarmouth?
Well, I think when planes are flying over your house, you don't love it as much, having owned a place in East Boston for 12 years before coming to Cape Cod. Lots of planes. However, the, you know, I agree with what Keith said as far as, you know, we do need greater infrastructure, and we do need easier access to allow people to come and go, particularly on the business side, in fairness. As far as the impact, I would want to see an impact study to the people of Yarmouth, as far as the community, to see really what the flight paths are. There's a lot of, again, the devils in the details, I think Tracy said previously. This is a devils in the details. I am 100% for increasing infrastructure and for improving infrastructure in Yarmouth and greater Cape Cod. That's a necessity for the communities and for the businesses. As far as the actual impact, that would come down to a lot of different things. It would come down to, you know, some level of environmental, but it would come down to the impact studies that would have to be done. I know we do have a representative. I would certainly want to read the reports and see what they said, and this is something most definitely you want to hear from the people, that it's going to impact directly. Infrastructure-wise, though, I would support it. I'd have to see the impact study on the actual people of Yarmouth.
Thank you. Tracy, same question.
Well, the impact is real, and I can tell you, we have, so, the municipal airport is owned by the town of Barnstable, and in my opinion, this is something that the Cape Cod Commission should be helping with because that is the, the purpose of the commission is to help for regional impact projects. This is something that has a regional impact. We have had several noise complaints, we have had several conversations with the airport, and we have asked them to change... We have had several conversations with the airport, and we have asked them to change their flights. And basically, they told us they can do what they want. We have environmental impacts for sure, including PFAS already in the water that needs to be cleaned up and monitored. I'm very concerned about what is happening at the airport. And while we do need the economic development, and it would be great to have more tourism and support our businesses, I definitely agree with that, but that might not be the right place for it. It is in the middle of a town. Perhaps they look at Otis. I don't know. But there is certainly an impact, and I'm very concerned about the expansion.
Thank you. And Tom, same question.
My expansion thoughts on the runway at the airport. Well, you know, we, airports are always fun. They come and go. Yeah, no. We have concerned, we have concerned residents that live close by. Over the last year and a half, the current board and the town administrator have hired a consultant to work at the airport, and they have made some flight pattern changes. The area of departure and return before was up to the pot. So over this course of many months, consultant working with the town administrator and the current board have flushed out some of the hidden things that they keep within themselves at the airport. And now they're trying to confine the pilots to take off and land in certain areas, which they should have been done before. So there is small improvements. The airport understands that Yarmouth is the neighbor, and we have to be listened to. The airport also, to me, reflects a point of emergency services. We have, in our area, in our region, a vulnerability to Mother Nature. And if we don't get the response, emergency time reaction from either Beacon Hill or Washington, how can those people provide us with any kinds of safety means if they can't get here? They have huge planes that carry many, many articles of help. And if we, you know, by chance, Mother Nature kicks up a big one, we could use those services. And how they got, you can't get over the bridge on a car with all those trucks. You have to have transport.
Thank you.
You have to have medical staff to come and help us. Thank you.
Thank you. And Joyce, you get to close this question.
I'm in favor of the runway expansion. I think longer runways are safer. There have been changes, as have been mentioned, in the flight paths, and that's one kind of mitigation. But I live in South Yarmouth, so I'm not on top of the airport. By the time planes go over our house, they've cleared roofs. We don't have to worry. But I'd like to say, you can think about this as a noise mitigation issue on the ground. And what I used to say to that gentleman who, for several years, brought up motions at town meeting against motorcycle noise, there are all these programs through Mass Save and the Cape Light Compact for deep insulation of your house that would amount to, you know, a degree of soundproofing. Insulation for attic, insulation for crawl spaces, so you wouldn't have that vibration feeling. I feel strongly that this is something that energy technology could help mitigate for the homeowners who are in West Yarmouth. They're still going to know the planes go over.
Thank you. And it's time for our closing statements. We have about 20 minutes left. We want to make sure everybody gets a chance to do their closing statement. All of our candidates picked a number out of the hat, and so we are doing closing statements in that order. And Joyce got number one. And she's going to use the mic.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for coming. I'd like to bring people together to really work on these problems. And here's my idea for what I would do if elected for my very first select board meeting. When they reorganize the select board, one of the junior people, sometimes there's only one elected in a given year, is given the appointment's responsibility. The appointment's responsibility involves interviewing every candidate that's brought up for any town committee with the chair of the town committee. It's not considered a desirable appointment, but I'm retired, and I would take it on with zest. I want a big, a big deal of getting everyone involved here. And I want to have a volunteer fair right at the end of the shoulder season for everyone to attend who might be interested in working on a town committee. Instead of just having a form that goes in, we could have a fair, you know, with some refreshments, but also with the chair and at least one other member of each committee. So people would sort of know what they were getting into because they could talk to people who work on the committees. And if they were interested in two committees, the personal dynamic might be enough to make them sign up for one over the other. So I think that's very important, and I'd like to get everyone involved. I also think, although we have these big, serious issues to discuss and ultimately to resolve as far as one can in three years, I'd like to see Yarmouth keep its fun aspect. There's some great stuff on Route 28 for kids and for families, some of which we have the Nicconello family to thank for. I'd love to see that kind of stuff. And I'd like, I like that old slogan, "Yarmouth Within Reach."
Thank you. That was our stop sign. Wasn't quite sure what beeped there, but that's what it was. Thank you. Keith, your closing statement, please.
What I would like to see is through concise and complete presentations by parties before the board and by logical and timely decision-making by the board, we can make the town more attractive to businesses, visitors, while providing our taxpayers an efficient and effective government and environment. I would also like to see more accountability for where our money goes and where the money that is not spent is doing. There does not seem to be any clear answers as to where that money goes. I would also like to see younger people involved in the town government. I may look young, but I am 65. I would, I would like to see some, some younger folks involved. And as Joyce said, I would like to see Yarmouth become a fun town again. I grew up here in the '60s, '70s, and '80s. This was a destination town. I remember piling all my college friends into the car. We'd come here every weekend. It wasn't an offshoot of Hyannis. There was plenty to do here. I think now with the expanded police and fire departments, we can control what people do, where they go. I miss Yarmouth being fun. And although I like miniature golf, I can only play it so many times.
Thank you. Tracy, your closing statement, please.
Thank you. And thank you to the League of Women Voters, the Cultural Center of Cape Cod, Cape Media. I believe the Chamber of Commerce also had something to do with it, all of the candidates here tonight, the voters and residents here and watching at home. I have 20 years of experience, four terms elected to the Board of Selectmen, seven years on the planning board, the Community and Economic Development Committee, and a variety of other boards and committees. There's no other candidate that brings this extensive experience to the table. My knowledge is vast and wide-reaching. We are losing two current members, and it takes years to get up to speed. I can hit the ground running on day one. I'm a proven leader that has always treated everyone with respect. I have a thorough understanding of Chapter 70 Education and Municipal Finance. There are difficult choices and finite resources, but we must live within our means. We need to invest in business and grow our tax base. I have always taken my responsibilities serious. I show up prepared. I'm visible in the community. I put the time in, and I don't just want a title. This job is not all sunshine and rainbows. There are tough decisions to be made. We can't do what the loud minority wants all the time. We need to make decisions on what's best for the majority. I've always done that. We need to provide a safe, affordable, livable, clean, vibrant, year-round community to our residents, and we must also provide quality education, clean water, and work to strengthen and support our business community. I was raised here, educated here, raised my son here. Yarmouth is full of amazing people. It's never been a secret how much I love this town, but there is much more work to be done. And as much as I speak of my accomplishments in this forum, I know nothing happens alone or without consensus. We have some amazing staff and volunteers that all help to get the work done. I look forward to the work, and I ask you for your vote, please, for me, Tracy Post, on Tuesday, May 21st. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. And Tom, your closing statement, please.
Exactly what I was going to say. Thank you. Yes, thank you to the LWV very much. This facility, one of my favorite spots in town, very historic. I'm afraid I don't get here enough. I'm sorry, but I do love it. I would also ask you for your vote. It's on the ballot, Thomas E. Nicconello. He is a manual. Just thought I'd say that. I too love this community, and my family, as Joyce and Keith said, have been here since the late '50s. We've hired over 3,000 people in this community for our business. We're five generations. We instill family fun values. Families come to our facility, and there's nothing that gets me more than when I see a group of family, whether it's four or five families, and all they're doing is sharing each other's love. To me, that is what we do, and we provide that for them, and we want them to do that as much as possible. There's a lot of hate in this world, and if you can provide love and sharing, I think it's something that's very cherishable, and I have played my fair share of that, too. Yes. I believe our commercial tax rate, you know, is very low. We have a 4% commercial tax rate. Residents pay 92% commercial tax rate. Out of the 351 communities in our Commonwealth, the average is 820. So I believe that we can move that number. Back when I was small, and Tracy just got her license, we were about 17%. So we have gone down, down, and down, and I don't think we can go down anymore. If we want this wastewater, and we need wastewater, and we don't want to pay for it as a resident, we got to get some more businesses here. And I think that will happen. The wastewater will provide opportunity, but it also provides a clean environment. We are very much contaminated with nitrogen, and we got to get rid of it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And Jenny, will you close us out with your two-minute closing statement, please?
I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the Cultural Center, the Media Center, and also the Chamber. For those of you that didn't know before, my name is Jenny Wheeler. I chose to run because I love where I live and I love what I do. But I know that we face a lot of challenges, and I'm not afraid of hard. If I was afraid of hard, I wouldn't do what I do. I'm not afraid of hard. But it requires collaboration. It requires listening. It requires bringing more people to the table, and it requires not necessarily doing what's been done for years and years and years. We need some entrepreneurial thought process. We need more people at the table. That is why I'm running. The Family Table Collaborative was voted one of the best places to work on Cape Cod in 2023. We have 600-plus volunteers. That, I believe, shows that my track record is building teams. It's bringing people together. It's listening to be able to help solve some of these issues. I also ask for your vote, Jenny Wheeler, May 21st. Thank you so much.
Thank, thank you. Thank you to all the candidates. And can I ask you to just give us two more minutes? We would like to, I'm going to turn it over to Lynn Plofnar, who organized the forum tonight.
Good evening. I'd like to close this forum by thanking all of you. We appreciate your participation. We appreciate you throwing your hat in. So thank you very much. Plus, you're giving the voters democratic choices. To all of your folks, the town election is Tuesday, May 21st. Write it on your calendars when you get home. It's from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. You can check your polling place on the Town of Yarmouth's website under the Town Clerk page. Please make a plan to vote on May 21st. Talk to your friends. Talk to your neighbors. Go together, and then go for a cup of coffee afterwards. Why do I say that? Last spring, Yarmouth had voter participation of 5%. Come on, guys. 5%? You can do better than that. Prove me right and turn out big time on May 21st. Please remember, because this is really important, democracy is not a spectator sport. That means you can't sit on the sidelines. So with that, thank you, good night, and pack the polls on the 21st with your friends.